I'll load it up later, yeah.
All right. Okay, this regular city council meeting of the Oak Park City Council is called to order on November 10th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. City Clerk Ed Norris, would you call the roll?
Mayor McClellan?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Burns?
Here.
Councilmember Radner?
Here.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yeah.
And Councilmember Edgar?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
That's Burns, is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Second Weiss, thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye? Agenda is approved. Next, we have item four is the consent agenda. These are routine items presented without discussion as a single item. Regular city council meeting minutes of October 19th, 2020. Special city council meeting minutes of the same date. Payment application number one for the 2020 miscellaneous concrete project M 714 to Mattioli Cement Company of Fenton, Michigan for the amount of $122,618.51. And finally, licenses new and renewals submitted for November 10th, 2020. Their motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
That's Burns, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Weiss, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Are there any elected officials attending?
No elected officials on the meeting at the moment.
Thank you. We don't have any special recognitions tonight, so we go right to public hearing. We can open a public hearing to receive comments on the district creation and the request of Oak Park Investment Group LLC for an obsolete property rehabilitation act exemption for property located at 13200 Oak Park Boulevard, Oak Park, Michigan. Is there before we hear from residents, I understand that we have a presentation by Michelle Carey, who is the Vice President of Finance for Pioneer Healthcare.
Hello. I'm Michelle Carey. I'm actually not the Vice President of Finance, I'm a nurse. So I am the Vice President of Operations for Pioneer Healthcare Management. And I have been with the company for a little over five years now. And I wanted to talk a little bit about the nursing home five-star ratings and where Oak Ridge Manor currently is and where we hope to be. Kind of in the context of wanting to be, you know, good and valuable members of the Oak Park community. And to talk a little bit about how we plan to improve our ratings for the Oak Ridge Manor facility. Kimberly, you can go ahead. So when you look at a five-star rating, Nursing Home Compare is part of CMS's effort to educate consumers about healthcare services. So there's Hospital Compare, there's Nursing Home Compare. And these are websites that are available to anybody who wants to look into the services that are available at their local healthcare facilities. And it's part of, like I said, CMS's efforts to make this information that's necessary for healthcare consumers available to the public. So for nursing homes, the scores that are on the website are, they're made up of three components. One of them is the health inspection rating, we call it the survey score, the staffing rating, and then the quality measures. You can go to the next slide, please. So the survey rating includes annual surveys and complaint surveys. So annual surveys include the last three surveys that have been completed at the facility. The most recent, it's a weighted average, the most recent counts for half of the score. The next most recent counts for two-sixths or a third of the score, and the next, the third most recent counts for a sixth of the score. And they just kind of keep rolling and falling off as they age, or becoming less a part of the total score as they age. Complaint surveys work a little bit differently. They roll on a 12-month basis, so from zero to 12 months, they count for a half. From 13 to 24 months, they count for a third. And from 25 to 36 months, those count for a six, to comprise the total score for the health inspection or the survey rating. You can go to the next slide, please. So for an annual survey, what happens is each of the nursing homes is to be surveyed at least once every 15 months. And generally, it's somewhere between nine and 15 months is considered, you know, the survey window. And what the surveyers do is they come in and they look at all of the standards that nursing homes are required to maintain in the state operations manual. And it's about 500 pages long. So there are a lot of standards that come in, and they go through all of them. In an abbreviated survey, it's triggered by one of two things. It's either triggered by a complaint that's received from a community member, a family member, a resident of the facility, or it's triggered by a facility-reported incident. And typically, just one surveyor comes in and goes through that particular incident and takes a look at it to see what was going on. And it's important to note that skilled nursing facilities are required to report specific incidents. So any incident involving suspected, alleged, or actual abuse, which abuse is defined not only as any kind of physical abuse, but any kind of neglect, misappropriation of a resident's resources, exploitation, which has been expanded to include any kind of digital media, photography, social media, anything like that that could be construed as taking advantage of a resident or, you know, basically using their image or likeness in an exploitive way, or against their will, or without their knowledge, is also included as an incident of abuse. And finally, any injury of unknown origin, or anything that could expose the resident to injury, we have to report that. When folks call me and they say, should I report it? I'm like, why are you asking me? If you've had to ask that question, then you report it. So there's a real effort to be transparent about everything that happens in a facility that isn't exactly the way that it should be. And then there are focus surveys that are designed to look at specific aspects of care. Those typically are not included in the five-star rating, but they're important to note because they focus on elements of care that are specifically, either they're newer, especially infection control has been a huge issue over the course of the past year. All facilities in the country have had an infection control survey in the last six months. And on dementia care, over the last two years, facilities have all had a dementia care survey. Go ahead, Kimberly, thank you. So when an incident occurs at a facility, there are specific steps that are taken. If there's any question about abuse, any staff member or members that have been involved are immediately suspended pending investigation. So they're put off work. If there's, like I said, if there's an event that's even suspected of being an abuse event, it's reported, it has to be reported within two hours. The resident is assessed to see, you know, how they're doing, if they need any medical care, if they need psychological support. You know, we have psychology teams that work with us, they can come in and visit with the resident, kind of see how, you know, how they're adjusting, if they have any concerns. The incident is thoroughly investigated as quickly as possible. And then the administrator has to file a follow-up report with the state within five days. When the surveyors come to review, they review all of this. They review the incident itself, they review the investigation, was it thorough, was it complete, did they involve everybody, did they use all of the resources at their disposal to investigate it? And then they basically determine whether the incident itself was substantiated or not, so did something happen that shouldn't have happened? And then did the facility do what they should have done to respond to the incident? Okay, you can go ahead. Thank you. So the overall rating that you get on a five-star, it starts with the survey rating. And unless there's something that comes from either the staffing score or the quality rating, it stays at the survey rating. So if you have a survey score of three, and you get a staffing score of four or five stars, and it's above the survey rating, so if you have a survey rating of four stars, and you have a staffing rating of four stars, it doesn't do anything. You have a survey rating of three stars, and you have four or five stars, you can add a star. The quality rating, if it's five stars, and it's higher than the survey rating, you can add a star to your rating. Okay, next slide, please. So the quality measures are classified based on short or long-stay measures and residents. And the short-stay measures are applied to residents who have come from an acute care hospital and plan to go home from there. The long-stay measures look at folks who plan to reside and remain in the facility. And those measures all specifically look at rehospitalization, trips to the emergency room, incontinence, skin breakdown, have they been vaccinated, have their functional abilities improved or declined? What kinds of medications are they getting? Are they receiving psychotropic medications? And if they are, are they being used to treat a specific psychiatric illness? Next slide, please. The staffing rating comes from a mechanism called the payroll-based journal. And it comes, it's basically pulled from payroll data that's submitted quarterly by the facility. The other piece of the payroll-based journal and the staffing data come from patient days and assessment information that are submitted by the facility through MDS assessments. So those are nursing assessments that include medical coding data, basically what's going on with the resident, are they receiving therapy, how sick are they, how much care do they require? And it allows for the staffing hours to be adjusted based on the acuity of the patients. So it puts together the number of hours that are worked by the staff in the facility, and it bumps it up against how much care do the residents really require based on how sick they are. The staffing hours are submitted quarterly, and the score is just based on direct care staff. So like kitchen staff don't count into the payroll-based journal, although we submit data on all of those staff. There was no submission that was required the second quarter of 2020 because of the pandemic. And again, you can increase your score by one star if the staffing score is high. Next slide, please. So overall, Oak Ridge is sitting at one star. The five-star ratings have been frozen since April of 2020, and that is nationwide. And it is because of the pandemic. The survey score is currently one star, and the challenge that we're having right now is that our last annual survey was in July of 2019. So we're past 15 months. Routine survey activity has been suspended, or was suspended, from late spring of 2020 through September, and it's likely to be suspended again. I mean, we'll have to kind of wait and see, but it's the way things are looking right now, I'm not sure that we're going to see routine survey activity resuming. And then staffing, they have not been able to submit staffing files since we changed payroll providers over a year ago. And it has to do with the way that the staffing data is formatted. It has to be formatted in an XML file, it has to be formatted in a very specific way. And we've not been able to get it formatted the way it needs to be formatted, although we did get it done this morning. Was very happy about that. Anyway, so we're looking forward to having staffing data included for this past quarter. The quality measures, however, are four-star. So if you look at the long-term quality measures, they do a really good job of improving the resident's functional quality. You don't see, you know, skin breakdown in long-term residents. You don't see folks, you know, going off to the emergency department, you don't see folks losing control of their bowel and bladder that didn't have that issue when they arrived in the facility. So those are all, you know, positive things and things that they're building on and want to continue. You can go to the next slide, please. So what are we doing? One of the big things that we're doing is increasing regional support to this and all of the facilities. We've gone from one to two regional clinical directors, added another Vice President of Operations specifically to focus on working in the field with the nursing home administrators to give them support on day-to-day operations. And we've added, actually just recently, a corporate director for quality and compliance to work with the facilities on their quality assessment and improvement programs. We are working on enhanced survey prep. Obviously, the survey is the basis for, you know, for the five-star. And there are a lot of times when staff, you know, the surveyors come in and the staff kind of, they make mistakes that they don't make every day. So we need to make sure that they are prepared and they understand what's happening when surveyors come in. And to do that, you know, we're going to start doing mock surveys by the regional teams, so that as the staff have the surveyors come in, they're more accustomed to exactly, you know, what they're looking for. And the fact that you really don't need to do anything special when the surveyors are there, you just need to keep doing what you usually do. You need to focus on doing care properly every single day. And if you're doing it properly every single day, then you develop the good habits that you need to have in order to have a good survey. We need to make sure that folks are monitoring for maintenance of process improvements from previously corrected citations. So as we correct, and you know, every time you've got a citation, you have a plan of correction that's implemented, and then a revisit to make sure that actually the plan is in place and doing what it's supposed to be doing. So to extend that out on a self-monitoring basis and make sure that it's continuing. Some quality assessment and improvement targeted to achieve the five-stars in quality measures. And again, it's basically just, you know, looking at internal processes to make sure that we're doing what needs done to make sure that we're getting five stars and not four in quality measures. Getting the PBJ data formatting squared away or changing payroll vendors, which, like I said, we were able to get that done this morning. And finally, building that replacement facility, which is what we're, you know, bringing to Oak Park, which, you know, some of the issues that we've experienced relate to, you know, residents trying to leave the facility. Well, this facility includes a wander guard system, which is basically a system that you put a little bracelet on the resident, it has sensors on the doors. If somebody gets too close to the door, who's not supposed to leave, the doors lock. They're not locked all the time, they can't be locked all the time because of fire safety. But it's a way to prevent folks from, you know, leaving the facility who need to be kept safe. We get every single year, at the current facility, we get a citation for square feet per bed. And it's because the previous facility had been grandfathered in under some old facility building standards. But really, you know, we need to be at the standard for square feet per bed, and this facility does that, eliminates three-bed wards. Having three-bed wards makes it virtually impossible to implement any kind of isolation precautions. It's a real challenge to create a home-like environment under those circumstances, and, you know, we want to provide a better physical environment for our residents than that. And increasing the number of private rooms, and again, you know, same reason, it creates more private home-like environment, it allows us to implement better infection control practices, and certainly, under the circumstances that we're experiencing now, it's ever more important than it ever has been. So that's, you know, that's kind of where we are in terms of getting, you know, getting those ratings up and improving the Oak Ridge five-star rating. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions from council about the ways they are improving some of their issues?
Adam, Mayor, I do.
Yes.
Thank you so much for that.
This is Councilmember Edgar.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for that presentation. I appreciate that. So you're closing the Ferndale Oak Ridge Manor, is that correct?
Yes.
And will you be bringing over some of those employees to the new building?
Yes.
Are you going to be increasing the number of physicians in this new facility?
Yeah, yes, we will.
So can you quantify?
So typically, what we do is, there are certain number, and I believe I had sent to Kimberly kind of a starting-off plan for the number of physicians that we're bringing to the new facility, but some of them are fixed, some of them are variable. The fixed positions are things like the nursing home administrator, there's, you know, there's one. The director of nursing, there's one, there's a social worker, there's an MDS nurse. Typically, we look at, right now, the facility is running a census of mid-20s of residents. The way that they're staffing that right now, because it's a two-story building, they have a nurse and a CNA 24 hours a day on each floor. So they are probably exceeding, well, they are exceeding staffing requirements on the night shift, and they are definitely meeting them on the day and afternoon shift. So as the census increases, we increase the staffing.
So I see that the plan ultimately, as the census increases, will go to 40 staff, is that correct?
Um, that's where we'll start.
You're just going to start at 40?
Start at 40 people, and then as the census increases, when we get closer to capacity at 74, it'll wind up being somewhere around 80.
So what percentage of your beds, of these beds are going to be Medicaid, and what percentage will be Medicare?
Right now, at Oak Ridge, I believe 19 are Medicare only, and the remainder are Medicaid. Now, we're bringing over 10 beds from Oakland Manor. So those will be duly certified.
Do you have any private patients at all?
We do from time to time, I think we have two right now.
It's good that you have some improvement measures in place, that you are trying to improve. I notice that the scores are a little spotty, but in doing a nursing home compare, there are serious issues in pretty much all of your facilities, and you've been fined, you've got some fire safety problems. So how do you address those? The fire safety problems?
So what we've done with fire safety is we've contracted with a single vendor to do the preventive maintenance on a scheduled basis. The facilities were, like, each doing their own schedules, and it just didn't make sense. So I reached out to a vendor and just contracted with them to schedule it for all of the facilities.
And that will improve fire prevention in the buildings?
Yes, I mean, they'll basically come out and do all of the sprinkler maintenance, the quarterly, the annual, and the five-year sprinkler maintenance at all of the facilities. They're going to do all of the fire extinguisher inspections. It's almost impossible for a nursing home administrator with the day-to-day stuff that they have going on to keep up with, you know, scheduling inspections. So it made more sense to kind of take that off their plate and put it in the hands of a vendor and make sure that it was scheduled and contracted out so that they could concentrate on making sure that the residents were well-cared-for and kind of make it automatic for them. So I keep up with the vendor, and they, you know, they're basically just scheduled. We contracted it centrally so that it doesn't land on them.
So all the beds in the nursing home, are they all single-type beds?
Do you mean the physical beds?
Yes, like the size, are they twin, full?
Most of them are a twin-sized bed, unless the resident is a larger person, in which case we'll bring in a bariatric bed. So that determination can be made both on just weight. Most of our beds hold 300 pounds. If somebody is more than 300 pounds, then we would get a bed that's rated for more than 300 pounds, depending on how much they weigh. In other cases, it depends on kind of how wide a person is. So somebody can be quite short and maybe not weigh 300 pounds, but a standard-width bed would not be comfortable for that person. So in that case, we would get a wider bed for them.
And what will determine who gets the private and the semi-private rooms?
In some cases, it's medical conditions. So depending on what the person's medical needs are, in some cases, it's their behaviors and their, you know, psychosocial, emotional needs. It's basically an assessment of what's available and what the person needs. Thank you, that's all I have, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions from city council?
Adam, Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. I just had a clarifying question about the five-star rating. I just want to make sure I understood you correctly when you were talking about the current rating that you guys have. And you were specifically speaking, I believe, to Oak Ridge Manor in Ferndale with that rating? Okay. And you said that it is one star overall, but that, were you also saying that you had five stars, or I'm sorry, four stars for staffing?
No, no, we haven't been able to submit a staffing, like a PBJ file. That's the one that we're having trouble with the data format. That's the one that we're having trouble with the data format. Um, so we have four stars for quality measures.
So so I guess what I'm asking then, are you saying that the staffing is not factoring into your star rating currently?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And if you if you were to submit it, would you have to wait back? Would you, would you already know what your, what your star rating would be? Or would you have to wait to receive that star rating?
We would have to wait because it's basically what they do is they take a case mix adjustment factor and apply it, and we we wouldn't know what that is until they pull it from the data that's submitted from our, like, our clinical assessments that we submit.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anything else on the presentation side? Are there any uh members of the public who would like to speak at this public hearing um about this issue?
Adam Mayor, hi, Ken Sherman. Um, I would like to speak. So, Michelle, I'm a retired emergency room social worker, and I'm also a representative on the Michigan Attorney General's Elder Abuse Task Force. So I have a lot of knowledge as it relates to nursing homes. My first eight years as a social worker was as a nursing home social worker, and then my next thirty-two years was in hospitals and ER settings. Nobody's talked about the configuration of the building on Oak Park Boulevard. Are you planning to keep the building as is, re-figure the the building? Um, I don't know if you or the city can address that. And also, how do you plan to deal with where um emergency vehicles like ambulances pick up and, you know, drop off patients? Uh, what part of the building would that go? Are you putting up a fence? Can you address those issues, please?
Sure. Um, okay, so the configuration of the building on Oak Park Boulevard, the the building that's currently there is coming down. And it's going to be rebuilt. So, yeah, the the building that's currently there, it's not, it's not big enough. It's not, like, it's, it's basically not salvageable. Um, so the the place where residents would be picked up by ambulance, they they could either come in the front entrance under the port cochere, but there's also a a back entrance that that they could come in. It's a little bit hard to speak to without um the blueprint drawings. But yes, that um there are two entrances that could be used for ambulance access. And the way that the curb cuts are configured, they're they're cut to allow for an ambulance to enter.
And what about, and what about parking for employees and visitors?
Sure. Um, so we added, I believe we've got, let's say, fifty-five parking spots um in the rear and on the sides of the building for employees and visitors. And then we actually added some banked space along the back so that if we were to need to add parking spaces in the future, that space could be paved and added, and that's an additional thirty spaces.
I can add to, Ken, that they did go through full site plan approval. Um, there will be a screening fence along both sides of the property that backups to residential. Um, and there are courtyards that are located within the building site as well for the residents to visit and the terrace off back. Um, and it will be heavily landscaped as well.
Are there gonna be congestion, traffic issues along Oak Park Boulevard um as it pertains to the facility and comings and goings of employees and visitors and ambulances and whatnot?
We don't.
Has that been addressed?
Yeah, we ask those questions as well, and we don't anticipate it based on studies we've done.
That was an excellent question from a competent person in the in the field. Uh, is there another um resident who, or anyone who has a question for the public hearing?
If anyone else wishes to speak, um, please notify us in the chat um or raise your hand on the participant list.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to make a point that I believe the site plan has already been approved by a planning commission.
Yes. Um, any other audience members interested in speaking to this? If not, um, I will close the public hearing uh and move to item B, which is adoption of the obsolete property rehabilitation exemption district resolution. Is, uh, first, we will need um a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Protem Burns, and is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Weiss. Um, uh, is there a presentation about this? Uh, Director Maroni, can you explain this one?
Yes, Mayor, the this first resolution is just to set up and create the district on that particular property. The second resolution, which is seven C, is actually considering the application from Pioneer Healthcare. So what this does is just set up the district um as an obsolete property rehabilitation.
District, okay. Is there discussion about setting up this district? Um, hearing none, um, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Protem Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
And Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Okay, this passed unanimously. Thank you. We are moving on to a resolution approving an obsolete property rehabilitation act exemption for Oak Park Investment Group LLC, thirteen-two-hundred Oak Park Boulevard, Oak Park, Michigan. Um, we need a motion to approve this resolution and a second.
So moved.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Protem, and is there a second?
Second.
Second, um, Councilmember Weiss. Um, Director um Maroni, can you um talk about this and what is requested uh by this group? Or is there someone from the speaking, here to speak for the group?
Um, what Pioneer Healthcare is requesting is the full twelve-year exemption uh based on their uh investment into Oak Park. We are recommending to city council to approve the exemption for four years with an opportunity to extend it for two additional four-year increments based upon meeting the guidelines below uh that I'll read below to be reviewed every four years. The guidelines are as follows. Um, we'll review them for the economic advantages of new employee hires, overall facility operations, and their current, and all taxes and fees, whether they have any code violations, and the overall condition and maintenance of the property. That allows city council every four years to review the application and consider it for renewal or um not to renew.
Okay, um, so we have a a motion and a second. Um, we have a recommendation from the staff. Is there discussion from city council?
Madam Mayor, I just have one question. So the way that the resolution is worded, do you mean that we, if we, if we opt to take it up, we can? Or are we required to review every two years after the four years is up?
Um, Courtney, if you correct, you can correct me if I say this wrong. From my understanding, if you approve the four-year increments, you'll approve the first four years tonight, and then approximately three years out um from the date of today, we would revisit that, take a look at all of these requirements, and bring it back to city council to either extend it for an additional four-year period or to take it away.
And would the exemption start to run now if we approve it?
Correct, which you need to take into consideration. The timeline for building it is approximately eighteen months. So um their real advantage on this tax uh incentive, they won't realize until probably year three anyways.
You explain that.
Well, they're not going to be taxed on the full property um when they're under construction. So until the construction is finalized and it's assessed, they would, they would not have paid any taxes um that would reflect the property built.
They just pay the tax on the taxable value that we've established for the property?
Correct, because it was a property that was not collecting any tax. Um, we established it per our assessing department at two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars for the value of the land.
And what do you estimate the value, how how much you think the value will increase in the coming years when it's fully operational?
It's hard to estimate that. They're investing over seven million dollars in this, into this facility. It'll probably um get an SCV somewhere in that range um once it's finalized. Uh, I'm not a city assessor, so I can't speak to that very well.
Are there uh further questions? Are you comfortable voting? Hearing no further questions, um uh, we are voting on approving this obsolete property rehabilitation act exemption for Oak Park Investment Group for four, for a period of four years. After three years, we will reevaluate it with an option to extend it for two more four-year periods. City Clerk Ed Norris, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Edgar?
No.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
No.
And Mayor Protem Burns?
Yes.
Okay, um, uh, motion carried three to two. Thank you for your um time and commitment. Um, there is no um special license or ordinance or city attorney report past what we've studied. Uh, City Manager Eric Tungate, um, it's all yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Um, I'm gonna start off by asking our Assistant City Manager, Kevin Yee, to take fourteen A for me, please. I'd asked him to provide a trash cart rollout update because I know everybody's getting these carts, and if you've seen the city hall area, there's there's a hun- literally hundreds of them.
Stacks of carts.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, yes, there are stacks of carts. They've delivered um the uh truckloads of carts to the ice arena parking lot, and they are distributing them currently. They started yesterday, and they plan on being completed with the full delivery by next Friday. Um, seems to be going fairly well. We're getting some hiccups, some people who um are calling and saying they didn't get theirs and that they may have gotten the wrong size. So we're working through that, but I think most people are pleased. Um, a lot of residents did not uh apparently see the postcard or get the postcard, and so most of them are calling to see if they're gonna be charged for them. But overall, it's been, um, I think, pretty successful. People have been pretty pleased with it, and um, uh, they're, you know, they're being delivered now, which, you know, was even better than I had expected. I was hoping they would be here um, you you know, by the end of the, the end of the month um to start delivery, but they're um, they're delivered and they'll be done by uh next Friday. So all seems to be going well. We're delivering them with um an information packet that kind of gives some um owners uh some guidance on them, you know, trying to, you know, keep them clean and um put them, when you put the cart, you know, try to keep it away from cars, um, you know, if possible, don't park in the street on garbage day. The carts are obviously big and bulky, and um, you know, they, it's really difficult for the the uh hauler to uh work around cars and things like that with these big carts. So we're trying to make it easy on them too and and efficient for them. Um, but I don't know if you've seen them yet, but they're, they look sharp. You guys picked the color, and I think it looks nice with our logo on them. Um, and and, you know, I think it, it's a, a nice addition to uh to have all of our residents receive one.
Wonderful. I, I chuckled over the title of this one, trash cart rollout, um, because they're rolling carts, but.
They're rolling carts.
Catch, nice catch. We did it.
Um, someone asked me the best way to put their address on the cart if they.
I guess I haven't really considered it. I mean, you could buy stickers like from, uh, you know, like address stickers. That type of thing would probably be a good way to do it if you wanted it so some people, like, you know, wouldn't steal them or whatever. Uh, you'd probably want to try to engrave it somehow with an engraving kit or something like that. But, you know, some kind of a permanent light-colored marker might be um a good way to go. But, you know, each one is coded, so, you know, we didn't get, we didn't opt to purchase the the reader for that, but each one is coded. So someone did call, like, we, and they had the numbers that are on the carts. We can tell them if it was assigned to their address.
Wonderful. It's incredible to me that uh during COVID and all of this awful stuff happening, still really nice things are happening at the city level. I'm sorry, who just asked that question?
Oh, it's Weiss.
Weiss, thank you.
I just wanted to say, I got mine today, and it's beautiful, and uh people are very happy. Residents are very happy. There are some very funny memes on Facebook about the carts. So, um, well done. I think uh, I think people are are very pleased. Um, and uh, I haven't heard any complaints on my end.
Madam Mayor, can I give a shout out to Kevin Yee and Deputy Director DeCosta for the, a job well done on this project?
Yeah, thank you, but really, the credit does go to Dave. I know he's worked tirelessly on it, and um, you know, he's done a great job of pulling this all together and and uh really has done, done a great job with it, and and I'm very happy that there's a lot of positive comments because it's, it is a a great project, and I do uh think it'll keep things neat and orderly uh um for trash day anyway.
Absolutely. Thank you, Assistant City Manager Yee. If you could also take fourteen D for me, please, sir.
Yes, absolutely. Attached is proposed change order number one and payment application number one for the twenty-twenty catch base in line replacement project. This line, and this project is replacing deteriorated drainage pipes and structures within the city roadway with the focus on areas uh with deteriorated roadway sections as well. The proposed change order is an increase due to some additional workouts added due to uh the low unit prices, and we're still within budget. There was a, some areas that we found that we jumped on, and the need, we did have it going through the rates. Um, so we did repair those, and like I said, we did a little extra work because we had some extra money in the budget. So to date, the project is ninety-nine percent complete. I'm sorry?
Uh, that's great, that we got some extra work uh out of the same money.
Right, right. So the prices came in lower, and we were able to do a little more within the budget. Um, and it is recommended that proposed change order number one.
Did I hear that the prices came in lower, actually? Did I hear that? That's astounding.
Lower than we had estimated, yes.
Wow.
Yes.
Wow. Okay.
Anyway, it it's recommended the proposed change order number one for the twenty-twenty catch base line replacement project, M-seven-twelve to Great Lakes Contracting of Waterford, Michigan. Be approved for the amount of twenty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. It is further recommended that payment application number one for the same be approved for the amount of two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifteen uh dollars and seventy-five cents. Funding is available in the water and sewer fund for this expenditure.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the change order and um uh recommend the payment application?
So moved.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Burns, any second?
All second.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember. Councilmember Edgar? Is there any discussion about replacing deteriorated drainage pipes? No, hearing none. Let's move on. City Clerk Norris, can you call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Yes.
And Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Okay, fourteen C. We're back to Director Kimberly Maroney, please.
Thank you. The city received two bids to purchase a property that has been vacant since two thousand, well, actually before two thousand eleven that we received through the Oakland County Tax Forclosure Process on November two thousand eleven. Since that time, the city has spent several time and money in order to keep that property clean. It is a landlocked piece of property and only, only accessible through three properties. One is an apartment complex and two others are shopping centers. Since we received two bids at the same time, it was suggested by our city attorney to do a formal RFP process on this, which we did put out. And the bids were due back to us by November first. As of that date and even till today, we've only received one bid, which is in the packet in front of you for an offer in the amount of $30,000. The RFP is complete and specifies that they will create a new parking lot to better accommodate the parking complex or the shopping complex. We do recommend a city council to approve the resolution that will allow the city manager to negotiate the sale of the property to the bidder that is part of the RFP. The funds that we do receive from this, we need to assess how much we have spent in maintaining the property over the time since two thousand eleven, and anything in excess of that amount will be sent back to the county. And that is all.
Is there a motion authorizing the sale?
Madam Mayor, I just have a question.
Yeah, can we get the motion in a second and then? Question?
So moved. Second?
Weiss and?
Burns.
Burns, thank you. Okay. Councilmember Edgar, what was your question?
My question, so this property is part of River Side, is that correct? It, it's like the site of an old swimming pool?
Correct.
So this is not owned obviously by River Side, but is management on board with this, with having the additional parking?
Management was sent a copy of the RFP. I called them several times. I never heard back from anybody there, so. But they have not owned this property since two thousand eleven. They let it go back in the tax foreclosure process by not paying the taxes on the property.
So this parking lot then is going to serve the corner, the, the part of the shopping strip that has the laundromat?
Correct.
Okay, so how, how are you going to reach it, the parking lot? Is it?
You, you can access it from behind the buildings. So it'll be perfect for their employee parking. Their employees will not need to park in front of the building. It'll give them additional access behind the building.
And this is off limits then to the other part of the strip that has Pita Cafe?
Technically, yes. It's private property.
All right. As I know, there's some, some parking wars going on over there.
Yes, and we were very conscious to make sure that we sent the RFP to the owners of the complex at Pita Cafe as well. They were one of the initial people who sent in a letter to purchase the property.
And speaking of that property, I don't know if this is within your purview, but I noticed that part of the parking lot has been completely redone, the part where Pita Cafe is. Then you've got the rest of the strip, but then there's this area between the two that is cratered. Like it's in terrible condition. Is somebody going to fix that?
It is the responsibility of the owner of the person who owns the Pita Cafe complex.
Okay. Do you know if he has any intention of doing it?
He has not mentioned anything. Code, of course, keeps an eye on all the properties in the city. And if it does not meet current code for being maintained, then they can write them up for violations.
Thank you.
You know why those holes are there, those craters? Do we all know why they're there?
Are you asking me that question?
Well, for me, it's rhetorical. I'm just wondering if everybody else knows, because I do know. It's pretty upsetting. It's pretty ridiculous. It, it actually is, it, it's immature. But I'm just wondering if anybody else knows why those craters that, that Councilwoman Edgar was just talking about are there.
Can you tell us?
Well, just a short time ago, somebody decided to erect a whole bunch of barriers between the two parking lots. And to make it, they can only come in and out of one part of that parking lot. And then I'm not exactly sure how, I don't know what caused the fight. I don't know what settled the fight, but then those things got removed. Because what happens is people come in on one side, they come in all the way on the south side, and then they exit on the north side. This made it that you can only exit and enter all the way on the south side or on the Pita Cafe side, only on that side. So they were lined with a whole bunch of barriers. And then eventually, I guess the immaturity decided to dissipate. And then they removed them and now we're left with a bunch of craters. So that answers your question as to why it's like that. And no, it's not going to go anywhere for a while, probably. It's upsetting.
Is it a code violation to have a cratered parking lot?
Depends how bad it is.
As far as I know, the holes from where the bollards were have been filled and repaired. I think Councilmember Edgar may be referring that there was one portion of their parking lot that was not in between the two buildings repaved when the rest of the lot was done, and that is in poor shape. Is that, I, I think what you're referring to, Councilmember Edgar?
Yeah, when you're, when you are leaving that north, that north exit, it's, it's terrible. I mean, it can swallow your car. So it's sort of as you're, as you're pulling out.
Oh, by the actual exit, yeah.
Yeah, by the exit, it's bad.
Yep, yeah, it is.
I'm sure we can quote out there to make an analysis.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Weiss?
I'm trying to get an understanding of exactly where this parcel is. I'm looking at the map and it looks like it's where the billboard is.
Exactly.
Okay, so I think there's currently a fence erected between the existing parking and then the apartments on the other side.
There is not, the only fence on that site is on the south side, which is part of the apartment complex and the parking, but that is the only portion. So about a forty-seven foot section of fences there.
Okay, I'm looking at a fence right now. I don't know who erected it, but I'm looking at a Google Street View and I see a fence between the parking and the apartments. Is, is that part of, are they required to put up a fence between the parking and the?
They will have, they will have to put up a screen wall.
Okay.
We have not voted on this resolution, is that correct?
That's correct.
Any other questions or issues? A roll call then, please.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
And Mayor McClellan?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you.
Okay, fourteen D. Public Safety Director Steve Cooper is here. There he is.
Sorry about that. My light went out. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council and City Manager Tungate. Before you, I have Temporary Traffic Control Order Number one six oh, Section one point two five. Dating back as far as December of two thousand and fourteen, Public Safety has received continuous complaints from residents regarding speeding motorists traveling northbound and southbound on Roanoke Street between Oak Park Boulevard and Nine Mile. Residents have also complained about vehicle accident as well as near accidents at the intersection of Kenwood and Roanoke Street. Their request was for the intersection of Kenwood and Roanoke Street to become a four-way stop. Traffic study was requested and conducted by the Traffic Improvement Association, and their recommendation was to post stop sign for eastbound and westbound Kenwood and to remove the stop signage for northbound and southbound Roanoke, allowing traffic for northbound and southbound Roanoke to flow unimpeded. This recommendation was presented to council and adopted on December first, two thousand and fourteen at the city council meeting. Since the adoption of the order in December of two thousand and fourteen, I have continued to receive complaints on a regular basis stating that the traffic conditions have not improved. And in the opinion of several residents, the conditions have worsened. Traffic Improvement Association conducted a second speed study at the location several months later and felt the conditions did not warrant change in the signage. Public Safety has conducted numerous selective enforcement details at this location as well as stationing our radar trailer and decoy vehicles in the area to address this problem. The complaints persist. After consulting with the city manager, he has authorized me to prepare a ninety-day temporary traffic control order making the intersection of Roanoke and Kenwood a four-way stop. And I'm coming before council seeking your approval on traffic control order number one six oh, Section one point two five, making the intersection of Roanoke and Kenwood a four-way stop for a ninety-day period.
We, we need a motion to that effect about the.
So moved.
Second?
Thank you. Any discussion or questions for the director?
I just wanted to, to say, I'm, I serve on the traffic safety board and this is, this intersection is one of the ones we receive complaints for the most often. And so I think that this is a smart move in terms of addressing the issue in a, in a immediate way and also being able to assess it after ninety days to determine whether or not we should continue it, similar to what was done in your neck of the woods, Madam Mayor, on Belfour. And so I, I think this is a great idea. I, I do want to add that at the next council meeting, I believe we are going to be reviewing the traffic safety survey that's going to go out to all residents in the city. So any other issues, any other concerns that residents have for all parts of the city, any, anywhere else that we may not have directly received complaints for, they will have an opportunity to share that with us and we can further study issues and make recommendations to council. Well, Traffic Safety Board can. I'm on my way out, but the, the rest of the Traffic Safety Board can do so.
When do you expect that to go out, that?
It's, it'll be submitted, to my understanding, and Joe Jenkins, if he wants to speak to this, can. My understanding that that's going to be on our next council agenda for us to approve.
Okay. I think we need to vote on the temporary traffic control order. Can this be voiced for? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Imposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Cooper.
Thanks for your diligence, as always.
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, members of council, fourteen E. I had asked the city clerk, he had talked about this a little bit in our previous meeting, but I had asked him and our Director of Elections, Lisa Vecchio, don't want to forget her. For, I, I want to again thank them for carrying out just a flawless election in the, what, three presidential elections since I've been here. That one was by far the best in terms of execution and I, I really did not hear complaints. In your packet, Director, Deputy Director Vic Vecchio, do you want to cover the, the numbers and just in comparison to the twenty sixteen presidential election?
Good evening, everyone. So for this presidential election, we saw a voter turnout of sixty-eight point one eight percent in comparison to sixty-six point one eight percent four years ago. Of our turnout this year, we had seventy-three percent of those voters voted by absentee ballot while twenty-seven percent were at the precinct. So we saw a major increase, obviously, in the absentee voting. Four years ago, those numbers were actually flipped exactly. So we had seventy-three percent in the precinct and twenty-seven by absentee. So we definitely saw an increase there, so. And like the city manager said, we didn't experience any major issues. All of our results from the precincts and our absentee ballots were reported to the county election night. And we were, we were finished up that night, so that's good news for us as election officials.
Right. I know in two thousand and twelve, long waits were a problem. What was the longest wait that you're aware of from this time? I, there were zero complaints, just.
Yeah, I honestly don't really know because I didn't get any complaints about any wait times. I just know that the busiest time was first thing in the morning. I don't really think there was much of a wait, like after five PM when you have people getting off of work and usually go vote. I didn't hear about any wait times at that, at that, in the evening hours, so we're pretty happy with that.
Are there any further questions?
E, one question, were there any disturbances at the polling places?
No, we, we didn't experience any issues at our precincts, so. Very happy with that.
And no lawsuits have been filed against Oak Park?
Not yet.
But, okay, and by the way, I, I do, I do think it's worth saying that I, I, I don't think the average person, maybe even not the average person, some people in high positions know what goes into an election. Cheating in an election is very, very difficult. And not saying it doesn't occur, it certainly doesn't occur here, but I'm not saying it doesn't occur across the board in some capacity. But to think it's that widespread is, is utter nonsense. Madam Mayor, members of council, if that's all questions, that completes the city manager report for this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have call to the audience. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Madam Mayor, I have Kenneth Sherman would like to speak.
Yes. Mr. Sherman?
Hello. Two things. One might be for Miss Barrett and code enforcement. I noticed that at the Nine and Coolidge Shopping Center where Glory Market is, that the parking lot is atrociously filled with trash. So I think someone from the city, excuse me, needs to scope that out, if you would. And then my second point is there's a lot of construction work being done on Coolidge between nine and ten mile. And so you're darting in and out of different traffic lanes because of the, you know, barrels and flashing arrows. And I had the experience at Oak Park Boulevard and Coolidge where you cannot see, when you're trying to make a left-hand turn from Coolidge onto Oak Park Boulevard, you can't see oncoming traffic. People are changing lanes, coming the opposite direction in the turn lane and then coming back, coming towards you and you're about ready to have a head-on collision. So I don't know how long the construction is going to be going on, but I'm just bringing that up as a possible problem for drivers.
Thank you. Thanks for both of those. Yep. Anyone else?
If anyone else wishes to speak during public comment, please do so or leave a message in the chat. We will get to you. I don't see anyone else at this time.
I just noticed Kevin Yee had a comment about where the garbage cans, trash cans are supposed to be placed. the garbage cans, trash cans are supposed to be placed, and they're supposed to be on the grass berm, not in the street, correct? Yes, okay. So that was keep the trash cans out of the street so the leaf collection and snow plowing trucks can go through. They're supposed to be on the grass between the street and the sidewalk.
Madam Mayor, while we're on that subject, can I just ask a quick question about that?
Yeah.
Is the can ideally supposed to be faced so that the lid is facing outward to open outward or inward? I always wondered about that.
I think if they had differing equipment, I think they would want the lid outward. But now I think they want the lid inward because then grab it easier and pull it to the truck. There is certain equipment that would grab onto the can and automatically dump it, but they say they can't use that in Oak Park just because of all the cars and everything else. It's just too crowded to use that handle arm to come out. So they want the handles to the street so they could, they can grab them and pull them to the, to the.
So handle to the street is the opposite of what's written on the can, correct?
If, I do think there was an issue with that, so we need to, and I think that was part of the education piece that we want to make sure that, that we want to get handles to the street to make it more.
Because I was trying to put the handle on the street and then read the directions and have always then turned them around with handles away.
So Dave is, Dave DeCoster is texting me now and says it's, it's not written on the can. So it used to be, or maybe it was on the old ones, but it's not going to be written on the can.
Okay, got it. I have an old one. I was one of the first to get these things. I am so thrilled with these rolling carts, I can't even tell you. Lifting heavy gra, you know, garbage cans and my, my four-year-old grandson loves wheeling the carts out to the, out to the grass in the front. That's how easy it is to pull these things when they're full.
Right. Yeah, and then we also offer the smaller one in case someone is not comfortable with, you know, the, the big can. We offer the smaller one, too.
Right. Yeah, if we're a family of two and we don't need the big one. Yep.
Yep.
Family of, you know, four, six or more, probably the big one's a great. Maybe even some people are getting more than one, ordering an additional one or something. If there's nobody else for call to the audience, that puts us on call to the council. And we're coming up to Thanksgiving, which is my all-time favorite holiday. We have a white pumpkin and everyone has written on the pumpkin in a circle about the things that they are grateful for. And I just added, I am grateful that the presidential election is over and that it was kind of like everybody was waiting for a biopsy to come in on both sides. And, and hopefully, we, we pray at Thanksgiving for a spirit of unity, loving kindness and vision as we help each other, work together to achieve common purpose and, and start talking to each other again, just like human beings. So very grateful to City Clerk Ed Norris and Elections Clerk Lisa Vecchio and all the people who worked the polls during kind of scary times because of the COVID infection and public safety presence. And it was a peaceful day in Oak Park, just like we always hope. And it is incredible that anything happens with zero complaints. So you might have set a ten-year record for me, folks. Luckily, Senator Gary Peters will represent our district. Brenda Lawrence is our representative for the fourteenth district. Dave Coulter, former mayor of Ferndale, we congratulate him as our Oakland County Executive, the first Democrat to hold that position. Our former very hard-working state rep, Rob Wittenberg, has moved up to county treasurer. Lisa Brown was re-elected county clerk. Jim Nash was re-elected Water Resources Commissioner. Sheriff Bouchard will again serve in the sheriff's position. We have two Oakland County Commissioners representing Oak Park, Charlie Cavell and Yolanda Charles. The county commission is now twelve-nine Democrats. Jeremy Moss was re-elected to Michigan State Senate. Our own Regina Weiss is our state rep, and we know how responsive she is. Bridget McCormick and Elizabeth Welsh will serve on the state Supreme Court, giving that body a Democratic majority. The Forty-third District Court has a new judge to replace our beloved retiring Judge David Gubbo. We welcome Judge Jamie Powell Horowitz, who will join Chief Judge Michelle Friedman Apple in the court that serves Oak Park, Huntington Woods, Roanoke Township and Pleasant Ridge. We congratulate Maxine Goodfriend and Alvin, who will serve on the Oak Park School Board. And I want to congratulate anyone who ran for an elected position. You are participating in our democracy in the best possible way, and we wish you well in your next activities. Stay active and keep working to make the world a better place. As you know, tomorrow, we're going to be putting out applications for an opening on city council. If you're friendly and willing to be accessible and willing to learn about unusual issues like rats and other unusual things, please put in an application. We're going to put the link in on the website and on the mayor's message. It should go out on the fifteenth. We are we, we are meeting this way as a city council for until the end of December, in which case, at which time we'll, we'll have kind of a dual meeting. There will be lots more on water issues coming. Meals on Wheels, luckily, Councilmember Julie Edgar works with the Area Agency on Aging and gave us information on how to get from three to five hot meals a week delivered for yourself or for a loved one. They're delivered between ten in the morning and one thirty, Monday through Friday. And if you have a pencil and, and know somebody who needs this, the number to call is two four eight six eight nine zero 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 one. We had fun at the drive-in movies at the rec center and the drive-through the boo. Blessings on your Thanksgiving holiday. Let's see. We have Mayor Pro Tem Burns, since I've talked everyone's ears off, it's your turn.
Well, thank you, everyone in public for joining us. I want to say kudos again to our city clerk's office for having such a drama-free election process with no issues. Also, again, want to say congratulations to Councilmember Weiss and all the other persons that ran for their office. Thank you for coming and have a pleasant evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Edgar.
Well, Mayor McClellan, you pretty much covered all the bases. I wanted to congratulate Councilmember Weiss on a great campaign and a victory and got to stir up some stuff in Lansing. I know you will. Yeah. Good job to Ed and his staff in the city clerk's office. I'm really happy about the trash receptacles going out. And yes, I've noticed on social media that our residents are pretty happy about it. Hopefully, it will result in a cleaner city and city that's a relatively freer from vermin. Also, I wanted to give kudos to Kim Maroney for getting Kroger to locate in Oak Park because it's really a fabulous store. I was there already. It's just, it's wonderful to have them in town. I, I just think it's going to really enliven that whole section of Greenfield. So I'm happy about all the development. It's a wonderful thing. And thank you to all who came tonight.
Thank you. Let's see, Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I want to say a few things. First of all, thank you to everyone who supported me in this campaign. Thank you to every person who cast a vote for me. And even if you didn't cast a vote for me, I'm, I'm so excited and ecstatic to continue to serve this community in Lansing. It's been my absolute greatest honor to serve the city of Oak Park in this position. And I'm not leaving just yet. I'll be around for like another few weeks, so you still have to deal with me. But the worst part of winning this election is that I have to leave this position. But I have the fullest confidence in this body, in this council, that they are going to appoint an amazing person to fill out the remainder, a little less than a year of my term. And then we'll have, you know, another election to look forward to in a year from now, in two thousand and twenty-one. Because if you weren't keeping score, elections happen every year and multiple times a year, too. So make sure you vote in all of them. I want to thank also City Clerk and the Clerk's Office, Lisa Vecchio and everyone, every person who worked on the election, all of the election employees, poll workers, everyone, you did an amazing job. I, I was out there working on Election Day, and so I, I saw things moving very smoothly. So thank you for your hard work on that. And I just wanted to say one quick note about COVID before, before I sign off. You know, we had a, we set a record high today in number of cases across Michigan. And I feel personally a little concerned with that we sort of seem like we're, we're, we're kind of adjusting to this. This is becoming our new normal. People are sort of just accepting that this is the way it has to be, in particular around mask wearing. I was out running some errands on Sunday, including at the new amazing Kroger, which is beautiful and lovely. And unfortunately, I saw several people not wearing their mask or improperly wearing their mask. And this is, we're, we're currently at a height in this pandemic. And that's just the easiest, simplest way to prevent the spread of this disease. I personally live with somebody who has type one diabetes and is at high risk. My mother-in-law has a suppressed immune system and relies on it, my family. So I'm very concerned about getting COVID. I know so many of us are concerned about getting COVID or passing it on to our loved ones. So when you wear a mask, you do it not just for yourself, but you do it for everyone. You do it for your family, you do it for your community. And it's very important that it covers your nose and your mouth when you're out in public in an enclosed space. So if it's pulled down below your nose, it's like you're not wearing it. So just want to remind everyone, I know most people are doing the right thing, but just be vigilant. This is, this is going to get a lot worse before it gets better, unfortunately. Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.
I think we lost Councilmember Radner, is that true? If he is not here to speak, thank you all for your attention for a very detailed meeting. We'll see you next time. Thank you and good night.